Please stand if you can for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
The United States of America and to the republic which is meant one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Okay, the clerk call roll please.
Counselor Bolin.
Counselor Bolin.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp.
Here.
Counselor Stouter.
Here.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Thank you very much. First up, we have the consent calendar. It is quite large. I'm not going to read through every single thing. We do have a couple of reappointments that I want to mention. Marlene Flyer, Sherry Lees, and Harriet Boss, reappointments to the Senior Disabled Services Advisory Committee. And Lori McNulty's been appointed. Trees and Trails Advisory Committee, Jan Diamonte. And other than that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent.
Move, move for approval as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar for this evening. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Second here. There we go. Okay. All right, the first up, we have a proclamation, a presentation. We have fireworks safety awareness month. Whereas fireworks are often a staple at festivities for many of our citizens, especially during the summer. And whereas many people do not realize just how dangerous fireworks and sparklers can be. And whereas the results of improper use of fireworks leads to nearly 12,000 injuries and more than 18,500 reported fires, structural, vehicle, and brush, resulting in millions of dollars of property damage. And whereas the Fourth of July fireworks season accounts for three out of every five of all reported fires. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, do hereby proclaim the month of July is fireworks safety awareness month, and encourage all citizens to join me in the Lebanon City Council in spreading the word of the importance of fireworks safety. And if, if you haven't heard or if someone's listening to our meeting, there is going to be fireworks at Cheetah Lake this year. And it is going to be, so you should be able to see them from most everybody's home within the community. So it's going to be nice that there actually is still be fireworks this year, trying to do as safe as possible. Okay, first up, we have public comments, and we have received two public comments that I will be reading. The first one is from Lance Gaddy. He's on the Lebanon Budget Committee. And he wrote and says, "I'm writing to ask if a discussion might be introduced at the 6:10 council meeting. I may not be able to Zoom attend as I'm working that evening. The panic of the last two months has long lasting implications. And whether you believe the right path was followed or not, it'll take years to recover and a generation has their confidence and faith in the system severely shaken. That includes faith in one another and whether or not others, including our officials, can be trusted. I come from a biased position as I have a medical background, and I've read everything about it I could find, and I'm convinced that the reaction was exaggerated and completely inappropriate. It appears that quote unquote "they" will try it again, and we as a community need to decide if we intend to roll over and cooperate in our demise or resist. Henry David Thoreau wrote that resistance is a characteristic of free men. I encourage a council resolution that we are a sanctuary city from the governor's executive orders, and that local, and that local and county law enforcement will not prosecute businesses which stay open. That action has been taken by Atwater, California, a town of comparable size in central California. It was applauded by the citizens, law enforcement, and business community. Thanks for your time and thoughtful consideration." Any discussion on that, since we don't have the person here?
I would say, I like his moxie. I, I tend to probably lean more towards that, but I, personally, I don't like that Oregon's a sanctuary state. I don't like sanctuary cities. I don't like, I don't like declaring that you are immune to the power structure of the United States. So I like where he goes with that. I too am worried about, about a second wave and should we close? And people just, it being complete chaos because people will say, "I'm not doing that again." But I don't, I don't know, I don't even know the ramifications of that, and I'm not, I'm not prepared to, I'm not prepared to seriously consider that at this point.
Okay, thank you Rebecca. Any other counselors like to speak on that?
Yeah, I guess I would agree in the sense of, I'm not, I don't think that we should take a stand. I appreciate his, where he comes from. But I don't think that, in my opinion, making us a sanctuary city, it has no teeth to it. And I just don't see as it serves the purpose to do that. Though I do appreciate, you know, him coming forward and giving us his opinion about that and, you know, the frustration. You know, I totally get that, but I just, I don't think it would be worthwhile for us to, to vote on us being a sanctuary city.
I concur also, Mayor, that becoming a sanctuary city is something that I don't believe, as Counselor Staudt has said, carries a lot of weight or teeth. I don't like being a sanctuary state, but I do appreciate his candid approach to his communication to us. And I certainly am not prepared to take action on becoming a sanctuary city.
Okay, thank you Wayne. Michelle, did you have some?
Counselor, oh, I agree. No action.
Anyone else?
I'm not interested in becoming a sanctuary city for this.
Okay, and I would concur with pretty much what everybody else has said. I think that if, if things happened and as a council total, we were not happy with that and we did not agree with it, then I think at that time was when we would then make a decision to go with the governor, go against whatever it would be at that time. But I think it has to be a situational thing, not like just a blanket, you know, we're sanctuary city against everything. Because it's very difficult, because we actually get our power from the city, from the state government. So it's not something that we can change, and it's not something that we have a lot of leeway over. Even though we have home rule, rules, it has been shown, and I'm sure Trey can go into this ad nauseam, even that gets overridden sometimes by state laws. So, so I agree. Anything else from anybody? Okay, seen that. Thank you Lance for your thoughtful comments, and also thank you for your work on the Budget Committee. We appreciate that. That, that's not an easy thing to get people that are interested in, and we appreciate you doing that. The next one up is a update from the Lebanon Downtown Association, Yvette Meyer. I think most of you got that or maybe didn't see it right at the, right before the meeting started, but we got that sent to us. The Lebanon Downtown Association held the first virtual spacewalk on, that sounds kind of funny. They weren't really in space. It was the spaces in the building. On Thursday, the Fourth of June, had a great turnout within, without, out of area viewers. The series goes through downtown's available places and spaces. The next building spacewalk is the Courtney Block Building, 6:00 PM on Thursday, June 18th. Check the LDA website for more dates to register at lebanondowntownassociation.com/events, on facebook.com/lebanondowntownassociation. A donation match of $5,000 was pledged to the LDA by an anonymous donor for the Give Five to Elevate Downtown. LDA is asking the community to rally around downtown to become any $5 monthly donor. LDA's goal is for 3,000 people to make this pledge. Your support will see the continuation of downtown events and programs. Now in phase two of the LDA Concerts Committee, we'll see what options are available, possible now that 100 people are able to attend events. With the COVID-19 hardships their communities faced in the last three months, the Lebanon Downtown Association understands the cancellation of funding provided for the downtown manager position is a hard decision for the city of Lebanon to make. The LDA board members are extremely committed to keeping our Main Street America designation. To do so, we must maintain a minimum part-time manager position. We've always worked diligently on fundraising, but we have intensified our efforts with the loss of city funding. We look forward to once again bringing events downtown to our communities and merchants. We're here for our downtown merchants and community, and we all want to be successful and thrive. And I'm with you, Yvette. I want to see us get back to where we've got the taxes coming in that we can support our tourism and especially our downtown renovation, because it's, it's going great. And, and I think once we get back into the swing of things, the facades and the buildings are just looking fantastic downtown. So, and the occupancy. It's been the biggest occupancy since I've lived here, that I can remember going downtown and seeing all the shops actually have real stores in them and not just boarded up windows, covered up windows. So, thank you. Okay, with that, let's see, public hearings. We have number one, state revenue sharing. Matt Atkins is going to present that, and it will be a public hearing. So I have the city budget officer and the finance, oh, we need to open the public hearing at six, looks like 12. And the city budgets officer and the finance director will provide their reports.
Okay, so each year as part of our budget process, we're required to hold public hearings before both the Budget Committee and council on the use of the state shared revenue and also elect to receive that revenue. So overall, the Budget Committee proposal was, or the Budget Committee public hearing was held on May 20th. And then today council's holding their public hearing. We currently have in the budget $200,000 for the general fund from state shared revenue. And, and that was based on a budget estimate provided by the League of Oregon Cities. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I would recommend that we can hold the public hearing and then have a motion to approve the resolution certifying the city provides services, and then a motion to approve the ordinance declaring the election to receive state shared revenue. Mayor, you're muted.
Hi, technology. Does council have any questions of staff? Okay. Seen none. Has the city recorder received any comments on this public hearing?
No, I have not.
Thank you. And the public is hereby closed at 6:13 PM. And any other council discussion? Seen none. Will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 2020-09?
A resolution certifying the city of Lebanon provides municipal services for eligibility in receiving state shared revenue payments.
Okay, call for motion.
Move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2020-09. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion passes the resolution. And next up, will city attorney please read title ordinance number 2946?
An ordinance declaring the city of Lebanon's election to receive state revenues.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve ordinance number 2946. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. Thank you. And that, public hearing. Trey, excuse me, since I can't lean over and ask you, can I just leave the public hearing open? And then go into the next one, or do I need to reopen the public hearing and close it each time?
I think, didn't you close it already?
I had not closed it. I was getting ready to.
Oh. I think just for the minute, you should just close it for each.
Make easier. Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, close that public hearing, and next up, the finance director will give his staff report on the agenda item two.
Okay, so we've got both a resolution appropriating the approved budget for the next fiscal year as well as a resolution levying the taxes for the next budget year. There haven't been any changes to the budget since the Budget Committee revised the budget. Going forward, we may come back due to the situation that we're in and maybe have to make some tweaks. But doing that will go through the normal public process that we would any other time. Is there any comments or questions?
Okay, no questions. Thank you Matt. And the public hearing for the adoption of fiscal year 2020-22 approved budget is now open at 6:16 PM. All right, has the city recorder received any comments on this public hearing?
No, I have not.
Thank you. The public here, the public hearing is closed at 6:17, we'll call it. PM. Our council discussion on the budget. Okay. Will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 2020-10?
Resolution adopting the city of Lebanon's budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2020-21.
Call for motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2020-10. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, and the resolution passes. Will the city attorney please read the resolution number 2020-11?
Resolution levying taxes for the city of Lebanon's budget for fiscal year 2020-21.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2020-11. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, and I apologize, I did say earlier 2020, or 2020-22 budget in the beginning, and it was actually the 2020 and 2021 budget. That was mistaken here. Okay, so we'll close that public hearing. And next up, we'll now temporarily adjourn as Lebanon City Council and convene as the Urban Renewal Agency. The finance director will give his staff report.
So I just noticed in my subject line, I have the wrong fiscal year. It should be 2020 and 2021. So I apologize for that. Outside of that, once again, we have approved the budget with the Budget Committee on May 20th. And today we'll hold another public hearing. We haven't made any adjustments. So it's recommended that the Budget Committee, or the city council approve or adopt the budget for $5,886,185 for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you Matt. Public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 Urban Renewal District approved budget is now open at 6:19 PM. Has the city recorder received any comments on this public hearing?
No, I have not.
Thank you. The public hearing is hereby closed at 6:20 PM. Council discussion, any questions? Will the city attorney please read title of Resolution 2020-12?
Resolution adopting the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2020-21.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2020-12. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The resolution passes, and will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 2020-13?
Resolution levying taxes for the Lebanon, Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency budget for fiscal year 2020-21.
Call for motion.
Move for approval. Move for approval.
Second. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2020-13. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The resolution passes, and we will adjourn as the Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Lebanon City Council. Feels so different. Okay. And next up, we have the fiscal year 2019 slash 20 budget appropriation, transfer, and closing funds presented by Matt Atkins and our finance director.
Well hello again, council. Each year we, we go through our budget, and throughout the year, there's, there's times that we need to make adjustments due to circumstances that we're unaware of. In this year's budget, there were a number of positions that weren't filled. At times, we utilized other services to kind of fill those gaps and made it possible to make our operations run as smooth, as smoothly as we have. And because of that, we're able to come this year and just do some budget transfers as opposed to a supplemental budget. So this is, we didn't spend all the money in one area, and we're going to just move it and spend it in a different area. And so in addition to that, we are also trying to eliminate some of the funds that the city has to make it a little bit simpler to understand and follow what's going on. So there are five funds that we're proposing to close that are no longer necessary. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Any questions? Okay, with that, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution number 2020-14.
Resolution authorizing a transfer in budget appropriations and declaring funds unnecessary and abolishing them for the city of Lebanon 2019-20 budget.
Call for motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay, then moved in second to approve Resolution 2020-14. All those in favor say aye.
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 Yeah, all those opposed? A pre- resolution 2020-14 is approved. Okay, number five, approval of Teamsters Union Memorandum of Understanding. Frank Stevenson, police chief.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. What I have before you tonight, our CBA is due to expire at the end of this month. With some assistance from legal counsel, and based on unforeseen circumstances with the COVID-19 and everything else that's going on, we'd like to enter into a one-year extension of our current contract that we have going on. The unions agreed to it. Really no, there's absolutely no changes, just some, just some exceptions detailed with the attachment, the MOU that I sent you, includes Article 4 and the implementation of 2% wage increase. That will be effective in July. We will plan to start negotiations early or late 2020, soon as things kind of calm down and the COVID crisis is over, so we can actually meet in person to, to negotiate. So with that, I can answer any questions, and be my recommendation that we pass the motion and accept the memorandum of understanding to, to extend the current contract a year.
Any questions?
I just comment, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Compliment the chief and the Teamsters Union for that consideration, and that's much appreciated.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the Teamsters Union Memorandum of Understanding. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, the MOU is approved. Number six, approval of Lebanon Municipal Code 8.10 Noise Regulation Amendment presented by Trey Kendy, city attorney. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I got the chief, I got the chief running the button.
Uh-oh.
The, they, this is an ordinance that we've been working on for a while. We made some specific changes as it relates to the, basically the subjectivity or the requirements for noise violations in residential areas as opposed to necessarily commercial, business, or industrial. We like the flexibility of not requiring a noise meter within, within the residential areas. And that was a kind of a request of the police department. I worked with Kevin Bukite, reviewed it as, as well as other officers reviewed it and the chief. Then while, while we were doing it, we also cleaned up a number, quite a bit of the language, and just kind of updated the entire ordinance. So I think it's a good change. I think it gives the officers a little bit more flexibility while still providing our office sufficient, sufficient information and standards in order to prosecute the violations or the code violation. With that, the chief might have something to add, or if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question for you Trey, and it's kind of an odd question, because I, I don't think it's an issue. But if we get complaints of noise at like the racetrack, just for example, and it's outside of city limits and the noise is coming into city limits, is there anything at all that we have addressed that, or is it just not addressable?
Well, you know, that's kind of an interesting question, because technically a nuisance can, you know, a nuisance occurs where the nuisance occurs. In other words, if you considered it a nuisance, there, I think that it's, I believe we probably could. But the question is, is, is are they subject to the city's, to the city ordinance? So we've gone outside the city at times to, to address some, some nuisance issues. But I don't think that we've ever done anything with like the racetrack or something, something like that. So I think the answer, I think technically you can, we just never really pursued it other than in a couple situations.
Okay, I just curious. I wasn't trying to target them or anything like that. It just, that happens to be the one complaint that I received. Okay, any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Trey and his staff for, for doing this and cleaning it up. You know, it just makes it so much easier than that decibel meter when you're in town. It gives a lot more flexibility, not only on the user end as the homeowner, but also at the police officer end, to be able to have more flexibility and tools. So I appreciate all the hard work for this.
Okay, with that, seen no one else, no one else speaking, we'll have the city attorney read the ordinance.
I did want to mention that this was one of the things that Jeff Clayson, the, the attorney that's working with us a little bit, doing some of the office hours, he did a large part of this, so I think he did a good job. So I'm filling time as I scroll back up to the actual number of the ordinance. Ordinance bill number 2020-07, a bill for an ordinance amending 8.10 of the Lebanon Municipal Code relating to noise.
Move for approval. Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve ordinance number 2947 and ordinance bill 202-07. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Ordinance is approved. Number seven, approval to apply for the recreational trails program grant, the Old Mill Trail, presented by Ron Whitlatch, our acting city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. What we have before you tonight is a resolution to apply for another grant for the Old Mill Trail, which runs from Guild Landing to Mountain River Park. They've done a lot of work out there that property owner has, and tonight you accepted the quick claim deed in the consent calendar, which we will file accordingly. We've already gotten confirmation that we're in line to receive one grant for it. There's also, I would say, almost 80% of the funding for this million dollar trail is being done by private donation. And so we're just putting in another grant opportunity for the recreational trails grant through this resolution, which would help offset anything that we've missed in, in the cost estimate, and move that forward that way. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Now, I would just, I would say, great job. I know, Ron, I think you've probably done some work on this, and Broad Cell has, and, and all of BLT and Heatherington Foundation. I mean, it's just, it's going to be, I am, this probably the first, this is not the first, this, I'm very excited for this section of trail to be complete. So, good job, everybody.
Yes. Okay, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution, please. Okay, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution, please.
Resolution number two thousand twenty dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing the City of Lebanon to apply for the twenty twenty recreational trails program grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the Old Mill Trail.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash fifteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution is approved. Okay. We will temporarily adjourn as the City Council and convene as Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency, and we have a mill race urban renewal district presentation by Kelly.
Good evening, all. So before you tonight is a proposal for a new mill race urban renewal district and an accompanying report and the request to move forward with the public notification process and adoption process for this report. As a really quick reminder, on March twenty fifth, there was a work session before the City Council to discuss the status of the URDs and some items that needed to be addressed. And the recommendation moving forward was to move forward with the adoption of a new urban renewal district as we're presenting tonight. And so we can, assaulted with Elaine Howard Consultants to draft the new plan, and she is here to do the presentation of where we're at and what we're doing next. So I'll turn it over to Elaine.
Good evening. So we're, it's a fairly short agenda item, and I think Kelly just gave a great background. Tell you a little bit about the mill race urban renewal area, ask for your comments, and then the idea is for you to pass a motion to move the plan through the public review process. So this would be the proposed boundary for the urban renewal area. It is unique in that it's a single development urban renewal area. It would be fifty-one point four five acres, and it represents the property that is encompassed in the economic development agreement that you have on that property. The establishment of this area would happen concurrent with the removal of this property from the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal Area. We would do those at the same time in the City Council hearing in the future if you decide to move forward with this proposal. The urban renewal plan as designed meets the requirements of your economic development agreement with a developer. The timeframe takes the urban renewal area to fiscal year in two thousand twenty-eight, so it's a relatively short urban renewal area, and that also matches the economic development agreement. The maximum indebtedness is nine million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, and that is also tied to the stipulations in your economic development agreement. There are only two projects in this particular urban renewal plan. One is to provide developer incentives, which is a rebate of property taxes paid, again tied to your agreement, and administration to reimburse both for the development of the urban renewal plan and for ongoing administration of it. There are no impacts to property taxpayers for new urban renewal plans. The impacts are on the taxing districts, and we'll talk about that on the next slide. So the impacts to the taxing districts are outlined in the documents that you were provided, specifically in the report that accompanies the plan. The actual impacts are anticipated to be less than the full maximum indebtedness. We had to establish the full maximum indebtedness at that nine-plus million dollars to make sure you held up your portion of the economic development agreement. But given the projected development schedule that we received from your staff, we anticipate that the actual impacts will be less. But you have authority to reach the full maximum indebtedness as established in your agreement. The impacts will actually occur as development occurs within the area. So it's one of the districts where you really can say but for urban renewal. This, this development is tied specifically to this agreement, and the reimbursement doesn't happen before development occurs. It happens after development occurs. Any new urban renewal areas have no impacts on bonds or local option levies, and that's always really important to understand. So if you have any school district bonds or local option levies, this urban renewal area will have no impact on those. The process for approving this potential new urban renewal plan is your agency review tonight. If you decide to move ahead, we have prepared letters to go to the taxing jurisdictions, taxing districts, and those would go out hopefully tomorrow or the next day. There would be a planning commission briefing on July fifteenth where we will be asking them to find conformance to your comprehensive plan. And then a county briefing sometime in the month of July. A citywide notification of a hearing that would occur on August twelfth, and that notification would be in the August utility bills. And then at that hearing and actual vote on the urban renewal plan at the same time, you would, as the City Council and Urban Renewal Agency, consider a resolution removing the same property from the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District that would go into effect at the point that the mill race plan went into effect. Are there any questions?
Okay, seeing no questions. Did you have anything else to add, Eileen?
I don't.
Thank you for your work on this. Appreciate it.
Yes.
And Kelly also. With that, if there's no questions, then I will call for motion. Could you release us back there, Eileen?
Oh, do I, do I stop share?
Yes. Perfect.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the mill race urban renewal district. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We will adjourn as the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as Lebanon City Council. And number nine, last item, is city manager's report, Ron Whitlatch, interim city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I won't go through the whole list. You can see there's a lot on it. I'll just hit a couple of highlights. As you know, we're operating under the phase two of reopening Oregon right now. One of the next big steps in this process is what, what this looks like for our senior center. Likely going to be some one-on-one type stuff that they do at the senior center over the course of the next couple of weeks, and then possibly moving further on. Kendra is doing a lot of work with different senior service agencies to, to kind of get a feel for what other folks are doing, and we'll kind of follow that model. I believe our library opens next week. I don't have the hours in front of me, but I want to say, what, Monday through?
Monday through Thursday, I believe.
Yeah, like ten to six, and then they were gonna do pickup only, curbside pickup only on Saturday, so we'll get, we'll get, we'll get them back opened up, and then we're at City Hall. We're still doing a couple of hours open to the public Tuesday through Thursday. And then, of course, we're open by appointment only. Interestingly enough, this has been a good time for us to check and see how efficient we can be with, you know, putting our forms online and not necessarily having as much counter support, but rather having, having more stuff that people can do online and makes it quicker. And so far, so good. I would recommend we continue that route, but I would also like to hear if we, if we start to get, if you start to get complaints about not being open enough, then we would, would like to hear that, because this is kind of a trial thing, you know, and with, with COVID nineteen, we're, we're working through that, but we're looking at those as some options. One other thing, let's see, Sunday, I'm sure you've all heard, there is a planned Black Lives Matter protest, and the chief has been working diligently with the group. I don't know, Frank, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I had to play IT here for a second. Sorry, Brent. Yeah, you know, we, we did hear that there's going to be a Black Lives Matter protest that will go on Sunday, the fourteenth. Scheduled time is approximately one to about six. Myself, Captain Hyde, and Lieutenant Bressler were able to meet with the organizers of this event, listen to their suggestions, they listened to our suggestions. The, the goal behind this is so it's a very peaceful protest for both sides. They're working with us, and we're working with them in a hopes that this will go off as it should, which is, is peaceful and getting a message that these individuals wish to get across. So anticipating, right now, the numbers are around a hundred and fifty, and they are planning in March from Century Park to Academy Square. And, and we'll have a, some kind of assembly there at the Academy Square utilizing the gazebo. So we're in constant communication, monitoring Facebook, making sure that the problematic people, that we are aware of that. We do have things put in place to ensure that the safety of the citizens as well as this community and the safety more so for the people that are going to be out in the protest. You know, that's the number one concern is that they remain safe. So they understood, you know, talking to the organizers, they're very understanding of that and appreciative of that. And so far, communication has been going really, really well. So I'm happy to answer any questions concerning, that's been a, a topic here for the last couple of days. We've been working pretty, pretty hard to get everything in place and to, to make sure everything is safe as it should be.
Very good.
A question, Mayor, for the chief.
Sure.
Do they have a, a number of speakers coming in, or are they going to do most of the communication themselves?
Yeah, so during the, when they get to the gazebo, the plan is to have approximately six to seven speakers that are going to be talking in about ten minutes. They've allotted ten minutes for each speaker. And they're going to do a moment of silence and as well as a prayer. So, you know, as far as, as far as talking to the individuals who are putting this on, they're very well organized. They want to get a message across, and I, and I want to ensure that they're safe in doing so. So I don't, I don't anticipate any problems, but rest assured, I am prepared for the problems.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Anything else, Ron, to your report?
Yeah, a couple of things. So during the month of July, we're gonna go back to regular meetings for the planning commission, and that's a question for the council, whether we go back to regular in-person meetings or whether we stay with a Zoom meeting. So we kind of, we need a little guidance from the council on this.
I'd love to see us go back to regular meetings, honestly.
Yep, yep. I'm fine going back to a regular meeting. I do plan on wearing a mask.
It's so much more accessible to the public.
Yeah.
This is Council Furlough. I'd still appreciate the ability to call in. I, I've got some health risks. I really need to isolate.
Absolutely, and I, I think that should be available if someone needs that, so. We, now that we've got the technology and have done this and stumbled through it and worked it out, and IT's done a great job, I think that we could keep that as a backup if we need that for someone that, that needs not to be out public.
Okay, we will set that up for July, and then last, I will be off probably Friday and maybe half a day tomorrow, so. But I will be around. It's graduation weekend, so I've got to celebrate that I'm getting rid of another kid here. Anyway, that's it, unless there's any other questions.
No, I, I did want to piggyback. I didn't get a chance to talk to you today, Ron, on this, but I contacted Sarah at the governor's office about park playgrounds, because I just keep getting question after question. And so there, you'll see like Bend and some other cities, Redmond, I think it was, that are, are allowed to open, but there's no guidance right now to do that. So we're waiting. It's supposed to come this week. Technically, our park playground structures are still closed. The signs aren't there because people took them down. The city didn't do that. So the parks are open, bathrooms are open, but the play structures are still off limits. And again, you know, we're not going to go out and, you know, arrest people for being on play structures, but that's what the governor's order is, and we'll have some kind of guidance by the end of the week. And that looks like opening up, so that, that's a positive for us, hopefully.
Yeah, we, we looked for that information today because I've seen the same stuff, but I can't find, I couldn't find anything out of the governor's office. And likely, they will open them and we'll put something out in, in our press release and whatnot, once we have a little more information. But right now, we just don't have anything to, to put out there other than that they're still closed. We've signed them multiple times, but we're running out of paper and stuff, so we, we quit signing them, and it's kind of one of those things.
Yeah, I understand. Anything else? All right, item, excuse me, items from council. Excuse me. I would like to thank the chief and the department for the work they've been doing and, and the background and making sure that the protesters that, that are there now are safe. I've heard positive comments that the police have been friendly to them and making sure that they are safe. The other thing I wanted to ask the chief to highlight a little bit for a couple of minutes is the, one of the things I think many of you counselors have probably received also mail. People are concerned about several major areas like chokeholds and police procedures, basically. And one of the, the really interesting things is, is being involved in law enforcement years ago and today, it, it's very, very different. And one of the exciting things that I liked when I came on as, as mayor is seeing that we follow the state and the county guidelines on use of force and our policies, and it's really actually a really good policy that we have on those things. But I would like the chief just to kind of go over that to address to the public some of the issues that people are concerned about. And maybe you could just talk a little bit, chief, about our training and just our policies.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, Mayor. I mean, you, you pretty much kind of nailed it on the head when you, when you talk about how, how great I, I think our policies are, and when it comes to the use of force and the training, the amount of training that these officers and, including myself, are involved in. Anything from de-escalation training, bias training, things that are surrounding those areas are something that we train in on a regular basis, you know, and I want to make it clear that it's no officer's wish to, to use force. It's, it's, it's usually the last option that we, that we're faced with. We are trained diligently on, on de-escalation tactics. And I have to say that I'm extremely proud of, of the officers with the amount of people that we contact on a daily basis, and to, to see the numbers when it comes to use of force is, is really low. But in, in, and when you're talking about the eight things you mentioned there, Mayor, what I can tell you is that these things, we, we, we've been practicing that for years. Went away from the chokehold. I, I've been in law enforcement for almost twenty-six years now, and the chokehold has never been around. You know, when it comes to the policies and procedures, when, when it surrounds use of force, it's, it's something that we follow the basic principles. That's the best standard, the best practice that follows state, local, and federal laws. And the, the policy that we look at is from the Lexipol, and this is something that's used throughout the state of Oregon. It's the best practices that evaluates and looks at every law and every civil liability that's out there. And I mean, I can go on and on in regards to our use of force policy, and, and you know, I'm more than happy to, to share this policy with anyone that was. to to share this policy with anyone that would like to see it. I'm also very open to the idea of looking at the numbers of use of force that this department utilizes or that uses. The numbers are pretty low. One of the things that I feel is is very good is is the utilization of body cam footage. We went and did that back, I think it's two thousand and twelve. And this is something that each officer that is on duty wears and utilizes when having contact with citizens. Also, we have dash cam videos in all of our patrol cars. I mean, heck, yeah, we're videoed everywhere we go. But one thing that, you know, it can't tell you enough, you know, the use of force by law enforcement personnel. It's it's a matter of critical concern in not only the citizens of of this community, but also for law enforcement. But again, it's it's only used when warranted and it's something that, when used, is looked at very heavily by this agency. It's looked at by an on-duty supervisor, then it goes through kind of a three-pronged three-pronged review by administration. So on the last one, it gets to and the reasons we do that is to ensure that no unreasonable amount of force was used. And if there's any training topics, things of that nature, if there are things that we could have done better. But, you know, rest assured that this is something that we don't take lightly. And something that we take extremely seriously. And something that we review very every quarterly, we have training that surrounds use use of force. We have trainings that surround how to de-escalate. Because again, that's the last thing that any law enforcement officer wishes to do is to use force or to be put into a situation where he has to use force. So I can tell you they're masterful when it comes to communicating and de-escalating situations. But I guess I can go on and on. And I'm not exactly sure if you want more information, but what the biggest thing I want to stress is that the eight things that we're seeing, we've been practicing that for years. And that's not just this law enforcement agency. That's across the state of Oregon. And this is something that you know, we put into practice many years ago and something that we we definitely train on and we take very extremely serious.
That hold on just one second, Rebecca and Jason and Michelle, and I'm sure Karen too. I know Karen's got it. I just want to mention also, when you and I have talked before, we've talked about what happens if there's an internal investigation and something's a little odd, like maybe it's a city counselor involved or something. And then maybe you could just share with with everybody what happens if something is a little strange in an investigation, what you guys do.
If there's something that's strange, like if we're thinking this is something that's wrong, I get other agencies involved as well as DOJ to look at and evaluate and assist us with the investigation. And again, if it's if it's of a serious nature, then again, it's it's looked at and scrutinized, not only internally, but also externally with other agencies. So it it goes again until as well as the DA's, the district attorney's office will also look at this and see, you know, if if there are criminal aspects to it, another district attorney, not from this county or not from this region, but somebody else will evaluate and look at too as well.
Super. That's that's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you. Rebecca, go ahead.
I just want to say that I'm very proud of our Lebanon Police Department. I'm very proud of our our city and of our county. So thank you, and I wish you would pass along at least on my behalf, and I'm sure that's part of what other people want to say. But thank you and your staff for everything you do.
I'm sorry. I appreciate that, Rebecca. And you know, we get into this job not to be thanked, but now more than ever, a thank you is is nice to hear. So I appreciate that.
Very good. Jason?
I wanted to echo the the support of our PD, but I also wanted to point out that I think we we had a really nice moment here with the public in that it would be very easy for us as a council and for you, chief, as a leader of an organization, to just trust your people and say, I know we're good. And therefore, I'm I'm going to close off my ears to the input of anyone who might point a finger and say there's something we can do better. What I like about this situation is that I feel as though LPD is saying, you know what? We we hear you. We're going to explain this to you. And I also feel like you're open to to criticism as it comes. I've read many of your replies. I thought they were very well answered. I think you addressed the the people with respect and with an educational approach. I think people appreciate that. Matter of fact, I know they do because they replied back to you and said so. But I know I'm so confident in our police department, and I'm so supportive of every officer out there, and I always have been. But I want us to remain open to the fact that if the events that are unfolding do end up displaying something that we might be able to use to improve ourselves, I feel that the the police chief and the police department and this council would be supportive of moving in that direction or exploring how to better use our our police. And so I thank you for that openness. Thank you for the honesty and the respect you're giving to the public. Please pass along to all of your your staff that very, very much still in support of them one hundred percent. I know this has got to be a difficult time for them because good cops really hate bad cops, and it makes them look bad. And I understand that. So I'm thankful for our guys. It's it's makes you proud as a counselor that when something like this comes up, the first thing on my head is I'm so glad we don't have to worry about about people like that in our organization. If it does happen, though, I'm also confident that we will take the measures necessary to address those people and those individuals and handle the situation to the extent that the public deserves because ultimately, public is our boss and they are who we answer to. I thank you for answering to them.
I thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Boland, for the nice words. And and I I'm a firm believer and always have been that the moment that I know everything about law enforcement is the moment that I need to walk away because I'll never know all there is to know about law enforcement. And I always, in this department, your department and this community's department is always open to suggestions on how to be better. I always strive for that. In fact, I preach it here with amongst my troops and amongst my my own staff is that we strive to be better. We need to be open to suggestions because we should never be closed off to those who we serve. And if there's something that they see that we can do better, let's hear about it. Let's let's open that. Let's open that book up and read it and take it in and see how we can improve.
I think our public appreciates that.
Very good. Michelle?
Mayor, I'll go ahead, Michelle.
Well, in the spirit of of listening and learning, I do plan on attending Sunday's event mainly, again, to listen and learn to to other points of view that, quite frankly, I I know a little of, but I don't know. I'm not. I'm certainly not an expert. And so I wanted to first thank you for working with the organizers of this as well as your quick and just eloquent responses to all of these emails that we've been receiving, chief. You've done a great job, and I trust you and your leadership. And thank you. One of the things I did want to mention was, so we talked about you talked about use of force in the beginning. I honestly have no idea what those numbers look like for the police department, knowing again, your leadership. My assumption is they're not that we don't we don't have to use a lot of these youth support tactics terribly often, but I have no idea. So is this something that we could possibly include in your report to council each week? Again, just in the spirit of transparency?
Yeah, at the end of the year of every fiscal year, I I do put a report into my manager notes that goes out to you guys. And I think the last one I did may have been in February. But I'm more than happy to ship you the information. I collect it every year at the end of the year so I can evaluate it. I also collect it throughout each month too. So I'm more than happy to share that information. Absolutely.
And maybe that's not a monthly thing. Maybe that's a quarterly thing, whatever works best for you. I'm not trying to give you a ton of work here, but something again that we can point to and show our community that, you know, this maybe isn't a problem here. So.
Yeah, yeah, no, no problem. I'm like I said, I want to make sure that I'm as transparent as I can be. And I have no I have no issues sending out the data that I'm collecting. It's not definitely not a problem.
Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words again.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up, I'll go over to Karen Stoudt.
Thank you, Mayor. So I obviously I'm going to echo with everything that everyone else has said. That last email where you went through all the eight things and to explain to the public, you know, we are in a really unique position here in the Northwest. We are very different than the rest of the country. And, you know, we operate under the rules of the Ninth Circuit Court, which is very is more limiting than other places in the country. And I think our citizens don't understand that. So it was nice to see you kind of explaining that. I also wanted to throw out there that at the police academy, every officer goes through training up there that talks many hours of emotional intelligence, implicit bias, and this community competency. And the community competency is specific to a bunch of different groups. So it could be the black community, the Hispanic community, the gay and lesbian community, and just trying to educate people and get the officers to understand, you know, that they're going to come across a variety of different peoples and how to react to that and treat people with kindness and respect. So each officer gets that when they go through the academy, and I'm not sure people understand that. And as I'm sure that you probably do annually, that you have some of these implicit bias trainings that go on annually as well to keep people trained up on those. I know that the Corralis Police Department does that only from my own experience. So I just really appreciate, you know, again, you explaining that and getting just putting out the information so that the citizens know what's going on and that we're really not like the Midwest and some of these procedures that we're seeing. And someone here said, no one, you know, no good cops like bad cops. I don't know if that was you, Councilor Boland, but that is absolutely true. As a former police officer, it makes me cringe when I see that behavior, knowing that I know in my agency where I was from that we didn't do that. And I've been very lucky here through your leadership and the police department here, that again, that that just falls suit right across the river and comes over here for the county. We are very, very lucky, and I hope our citizens understand that we have great law enforcement in this area that's very respectful and does the right thing for the right reasons. That's all.
Okay. All right, Wayne, would you like to speak?
Just really to echo what all has been said in terms of the confidence that we have as a council and I as a counselor with our police department. I think we are very fortunate having watched all these protests and rioting. It's, I guess, a question for the chief. How do how do these bad cops get on our staff?
Boy, you know, it's it's a good question. You know, we don't have bad cops on this staff. I can tell you that because if we did have a bad cop, they wouldn't be within this agency. You know, we do do extensive backgrounds. We do extensive psychological exams, medical exams. We train them. Like Karen has mentioned, I mean, the the at the police academy is extensive training for sixteen weeks. It doesn't stop there. We have our own field training that so we're talking about a year and a half worth of training for approximately about a year and a half before that officer is even allowed to be on his own. And that that's training doesn't stop. It's it's yearly. It's it's quarterly. It's, you know, it's weekly. It's heck, for me, it's daily. I learn something new every day. So in 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 I'll echo again, there's nothing more than I hate. It's it's a bad cop. It gives a bad taste. It gives a bad reputation. The oath that we swore to to uphold and to protect, we we hold near and dear to our heart. And when that oath is broken, I can tell you as as the chief, when that oath and when an officer breaks that oath, even if this own agency, as far as it is, they no longer an officer within this police. And but, you know, like I said, how does a how does a good cop turn bad? You know, there's that's that's a great question to ask. All I can tell you is 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 if there is a bad cop, they will be identified very quickly and handled swiftly and no longer be a police officer. So that much I can tell you. But I got to tell you, the the men and women that work within this community and and within this county are some of the best of the best. And like Karen said, you know, we should feel very fortunate because we have an outstanding law enforcement family within Wayne County, Benton County. Like you said, it's the best of the best. They 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 train regularly and uphold their oath. So I don't know if that answers the question. But what I can tell you is is I'm extremely proud of the badge that I that I wear because I get to work alongside the best. And I'm very, very honored for that.
Okay, Robert, did you have anything since I can't see?
Well, I I'd just like to, once again, agree with what's been said. I'd like to follow up on one thing I heard the chief say, which I think speaks to the reason that we are successful as we are. And that's the fact that we follow the county and the state. We're not a rogue department being manipulated by a union trying to preserve employees' rights. When something is identified that's out of sync with local policy, which includes Lynn County and the state of Oregon, action is taken immediately. And that stands to our credit.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? From council? Any other topics? Okay, do we have anybody from the press online or watching? That wanted to comment?
We do have one member of the press, Sean Morgan from the Lebanon Local.
I am. I'm I'm good.
No questions?
No, thank you.
Oh, your time to grill us right here. Okay. Did somebody?
Yes, we do have Judge Wade. I joined while the discussion was going on about the the chief's comments. So I'm going to let him into the meeting. My here, Dave.
Absolutely. Hello, Judge? Hello, Judge, do you have audio?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Good.
Did you? Did you want to comment on this?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to comment on the law enforcement issues or?
Well, I don't want to repeat everything that everybody else has said. I can only comment that in my in my contacts with the our officers, those contacts are always positive. And particularly the respect they show to to the people that we have to deal with in our court is 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 great. And it's it makes for a I want to say a good experience for some of those folks, but certainly a fair and just experience.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next scheduled meeting tentative is June twenty-fourth, eight to twelve. And the executive session would be at noon, a regular meeting and then a regular meeting. That's tentative. Ron will keep us up to date on those those dates and times. We're going to recess the regular session and then move into executive session. We'll just take a few minutes for IT to get things cleared up and ready to go. And then we will move into executive session. things cleared up and ready to go. And then we will move into executive session.